With a report from the secretary. Joe?
Yes, good morning.
Morning.
I would like to note that we issued the appropriate public notices for this joint special meeting. And other than that, we look forward to the presentation.
Great.
Thank you.
It is important to note that this is technically, or at least the intent was to be a joint meeting with the with the school board, so.
As I noted, Pat wears two hats, so.
Right. Okay, thanks. All set, Joe?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Okay, then we're going to hear from the program manager. Chris?
Good morning. This will be probably my shortest report formally.
Okay.
Me personally, but wanted to introduce our team here, wanted to kind of frame what we're doing today. So we wanted, we've been, you've been hearing from us for quite some time that we've been collecting data, we've been testing, we've been boring, we've been pulling soil samples out of the ground, so that we can get enough data to come up with a design that's going to allow us to construct a field over there in the way that we want, in a manner that we want to. At the same time, we've been kind of parallel tracking discussions with the State Education Department to ensure that, to seek some assurance from them that they will fund us in excess of our incidental allowance that we currently have. Suzanne and I went to Albany and had a very good meeting with our project manager, Mary Moser, and with Roseanne Graff, who's a facility, head of facilities out there. We have some follow-up information that we're providing to them that they've requested with respect to Fowler and itself and its program and what it's done, and to kind of bring home for them, you know, what we're trying to accomplish there at Fowler, and this is a part of what we're trying to accomplish over there in terms of bettering that school for the, for the community and for the students that are there. So that's kind of being in parallel track. And where we stand today is we've, we've really got our arms around the data. We wanted to present that to you today so you get a little bit more insight as to what we've been doing and how technical and complicated that field is with respect to being able to build on there and come up with a predictable performance parameter for that field. So you're going to hear a little bit about that today from Jim Stewart is here with Stopen Engineers. Mike Short is here with La Bella Associates, they're the architect, and Jim is their consultant and there's the structural engineer for this. He's been guiding us and educating us. And then I have Nate Van Lee is here from CNS, and so CNS, just as a reminder, they're our construction manager, so they're involved in the schedule and the budgeting for this. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim, and I think, Mike, you're going to, you're going to tag, you're going to jump in at certain components here. We'll run through what is it we're doing, and then the next steps forward, and then entertain any questions that we have from there. The screen is, we ended up up there, hopefully folks can kind of turn and see that okay. And I don't know, mic-wise, Jim, you'll have to project, I guess, a little bit with the, or you're going to stand right here.
Okay.
Very good.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks. Good morning, everybody. I hope you can hear me okay. I did want to tell you to begin a little bit about myself. I grew up in Syracuse. I went to Ed Smith Levy and Nottingham High School. I graduated from Syracuse University, had the, after Syracuse, I went to graduate school in geotechnical engineering. I worked in Texas for a few years. I had the opportunity to come back and teach my business at Syracuse University. I did that, and I had the privilege of having both your Mary Robinson and Tom Ferrara in class in those days. They didn't force me into retirement, but I did retire shortly after I had them. And I signed on with John Stopen about 30 years ago, and over the last 30 years, I've worked a good portion of my professional career in Syracuse. The soils in Syracuse are interesting and challenging. If a geotechnical engineer tells you that, it usually means it's expensive and challenging. I like a good challenge. Your project has not disappointed me a bit. It's got some interesting twists. I'd like to go to the next slide there, Chris. The particular challenges that we have, it all boils down to a layer of soft compressible soil. It's called peat, and I'll explain a little bit about it. I wanted to give you some background. I'm just going to start with the geology very quickly, very briefly. It is also a site that somebody else built on. They built a heavy factory there, there's still remnants, and the fallout from the heavy factory, I know you folks know about that. There's a number of utilities, there's an existing CSO pipe, there's sewer, there's existing infrastructure, there's also the existing Harbor Brook Creek encapsulation that flows between Fowler School and the field that we want to build. That creates the need for some special care. That's a very important piece of infrastructure. Business, as usual, in a way, on a construction site, has to acknowledge that problem and preservation of that very important piece of infrastructure. There's some interesting seismic design considerations that we're not going to talk about today, that's just a little more. And in combination with the poor soils, there's also a very tight design tolerance. I wanted to share with you that my son is the head groundskeeper for the Syracuse Mets out at NBT Stadium. He's been there for about 10 years, and he always, I mean, he's very fussy and persnickety. I mean, that's his job, he has to be, but he always impresses on me that the playing fields are precision surfaces, and they have to be good. Yes, sir?
What does CSO mean?
Oh, it's a combined storm overflow sewer, I believe. Nate, is that right? Sewer?
It's a combined storm overflow that runs through the property as well.
And when you say seismic design, so I'm accustomed to the word seismic, but as it relates to this, what does that mean?
Well, it's earthquake design, and there is a design earthquake that the New York State Building Code requires us to design for. It turns out that having a very poor soil condition and having a structure that holds more than 500 people puts you into a seismic design category where you have to be very careful with the seismic design. It's just, it's the building code, it's what we have to do, it's the law, but it throws a little extra twist into how we deal with those soils. It's a consequence of the poor soil.
Okay.
Okay? And the message I wanted to leave you is that things we take for granted at building on some sites, we can't take for granted here. There's significant and serious consequences of those issues, all these issues, and there's actually more to it than just these, but these are what I consider the main ones. So it starts with the geology, and Harbor Brook is to blame. I guess if we had to blame anybody, we blame Harbor Brook. Harbor Brook is something that we believe, or the geologists believe, started flowing after the glaciers melted, which was about 10,000 years ago. It falls all the way from Harris Hill, where the Anadaga County Veteran Cemetery is, down through Western Lights, down a little bit south of Fowler, and I've shown that on the map on the left. And then there's a little dashed line before it becomes solid and flows into Anadaga Lake again. You can see where Harbor Brook flows underneath Interstate 690. That little red flag is the Fowler Field location, and that dashed line is the buried Harbor Brook Creek. Harbor Brook Creek drains a good portion of the county, so it's, it's important to maintain the Harbor Brook. It was built, it was encapsulated, I believe, in the early 1900s. I'll talk about that a little bit. But on the right side is an aerial photo that shows Fowler School, on the left, and the existing playing field, which is also the proposed location for the new playing field, and shows the red line. Harbor Brook is encapsulated, it's buried in a chamber that's, I believe, about six or seven feet high, it's got three or four feet of dirt on top of it, and it's just old masonry. In some places, it's been repaired with concrete. We know it's in fairly precarious condition. As long as it's not disturbed, it'll probably have a additional long life for us, but if it's disturbed too much from vibrations or construction disturbance, it could be a problem.
Just, just to be clear, so the proposed work does not, does not propose to, to touch the existing encapsulation at all, correct?
That's correct. The proposed field is in here. I had my pointer, I should have showed you that.
Tell me again, the depth of, of the brook is, is what?
Not exactly sure.
It varies, it's about three feet below finished grade.
Wow.
There's areas where it's only a foot.
Right.
But it varies, and it's about a seven-foot-high culvert, if you will, that you can walk, if you have access, you can walk.
Right, wow, okay, thanks.
Yeah, they just built it over the stream.
Right.
They didn't actually put a bottom on it.
I see.
Yeah.
As Jim was mentioning, the challenges, so the Harbor Brook.
You can just use the mic because we are.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
The Harbor Brook, it's working, there we go. The Harbor Brook, as it runs through here, there's an easement on that as well, and then the CSO line is also running perpendicular to that through here as well.
Right.
Which really provides us a tight spot for where the field and the stadium can go. And then in addition to all of that, down here is what's considered a flood zone as well, which we cannot build in. So all of those things, as well as the soils, there's also regulated soils on this site have really made this site a special, very special site.
Yeah. I was able to dig out an old topo map and an old photograph. The topo map here is published by the USGS. It shows Harbor Brook going through this dashed line. It goes underneath the railroad, which is where I-690 is now, and finally flows out into Anadaga Lake up here someplace. The natural topography was a little lower, is Harbor Brook cut a ravine. Remember, Harbor Brook's been working at this for 10,000 years. We know with changes in global climate and so forth that it was flowing through a different environment than it does today. But in the 1900s or so, they built this building, which is shown on the map here, and it turns out that the field is to be constructed right in this area. I guess this is Marcella Street, and Otisco Street, Gifford Street, and Seymour. The existing Fowler School is over a portion of this old factory, and I understand that during the construction in the 60s of Fowler School, they hit a lot of old foundations, and there was quite a cost impact and delay, and there were some, at least from reviewing the record, it was quite an ordeal to build around the old foundations. What I wanted to do is call your attention to this area. Now, I had two 1938 photos that I could look at in stereo, like an old stereo opticon postcard, and when you do that, this facility really jumps out at you. It was a fairly tall structure. Chris, can you move ahead one? It was about a three or four-story manufacturing building, and you can see the length of the shadows along the outside of the building. Again, this is where the high school is built. Harbor Brook comes right up through here. This is a large building, and it's got a smokestack. What you might not see is a long shadow unless I point it out to you, but there's a long shadow here. I estimate that there was a large smokestack, at least 100 feet high or 120 feet high, right there, and so this was probably a boiler building, or a power building of some sort for steam power, and it was a heavy building, which meant it had to have a heavy foundation, way heavier than our field. Next slide, please. This is my projection of the proposed field on top of the old photo, and I want to call your attention to a couple of things. First off, the red represents the track, and the green represents the playing field. There's a couple areas called the D areas at either end, for obvious reasons, they're Ds. But look at the relationship between this old building and the field. The track and a part of the field will be built right across that old foundation. So remember that now. Next, next slide. Your, your design team did a number of test borings. In my business, we drill borings to determine the soil stratification at a particular point, and then we do it at several points, and we'll stitch together a cross-section. It's quite similar to having an MRI done in the hospital. They will take, will take several sections through a layered system and line them up to see how, to develop a model of what's out at the site. I think there's 120 borings or 130 borings, which is very fortunate for us at this point because we have a pretty good understanding of what's down there. So I took that information and we developed some sections. I want to call your attention to this section that goes from end to end, from the north end of the field to the south end of the field, and then I have another one that goes from the north end of the proposed track to the south end of the proposed track. So the first one, I think, we'll look at is the one in the field, Chris.
Can you show where the foundation is?
Oh, yeah. This one is a blow-up of that, and you see the proposed bleachers, this is the north end of the field and the south end of the field. I'm looking at a cross-section right through here is D, and I know you can't see this too well. We have to draw these things to scale so that they make sense to us. If I draw it to scale, I'm about 400 feet long, and I need to show the layers of soil down around 30 feet, and that's why that particular section is so long and hard to understand for you. So I blew it up in the next slide a little bit, and there's two layers, three, there's three layers of soil underneath your field that are going to be significant. The first layer is the old fill. That was partially the old fill that the old factory was constructed on. It's also, I believe, some of the material that was left behind after the factory was demolished in the 1970s. It's also some material that was brought in. The field itself is now at around elevation 32. That means about 32 feet higher than Anadaga Lake, but the south end of the field is now at about elevation 38. So it's about six feet higher, and there's a rise, and I'm sure you, you folks have seen that if you've traveled out to the field. This adds a little wrinkle to, to the project. The CSO existing sewer line that Michael spoke about a minute ago actually passes through this area, the existing one passes through this area, and the, part of the plan would be to move that and get it out from underneath the field, or get it out from the main action of the field in case there was ever a problem, that the sewer could be repaired without digging up the field. But the real story out here with the subsurface is underneath that fill is a layer of peat. And I'm showing that as this blue line. Pete is probably one of the absolute worst actors for a geotechnical engineer. It's found all over the world. It's, I think, the statistic is it covers 3% to 5% of, of the earth, or it's found underneath 3% to 5% of the earth. Often when it's found.
It's a great filter for some good Scotch.
It is. It's, actually, it imparts the smoky flavor to Scotch.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does, so. It's, it's used to run the stills, I believe, and at the same time, the smoke create, yes, so that's.
Lagavulin.
Yeah, that's right.
I was going to talk about, talk about the benefit of burning peat moss for, for fuel, but your example's way back.
Well, if I can go off on a slight side for you, there's a significant amount of peat over by Pete Street, and some Irish folks moved to Syracuse in the mid-1800s with the idea of mining it, drying it, and selling it. It turned out that it's fairly wet, it's below the water table, and they didn't have a lot of luck drying it in the sunshine. So I think they went bankrupt. But fast forward a few years, and the New York State DOT built I-690 right there from Midler to Teal, and they encountered the same peat, and it was such a bad actor underneath I-690, they looked at the cost of mining out the peat and building an embankment that would be stable in the long term, or building some structures. In those days, it was actually cheaper to dig the peat out, and they went through a major operation. They dug out all the peat from Midler to Teal, and, well, that's an aside, I guess, I, you got that for free. How's that? So that peat, let me tell you one thing, but go back one, Chris, there. The peat's about 17 feet thick at the worst location on your site, according to the test borings. But it peters out to zero in some cases, and there's a good portion of the proposed field and track that has no peat. This creates another little bit of a problem. If it was all peat, and we could build on top of it uniformly, and the soil kind of squished uniformly, everything would move uniformly, and there wouldn't be too much of an issue. Where we get into the problem is that the spongy soil will displace more than the stable soil, and that leads to a differential that is the problem. And the whole problem with this project is trying to deal with that differential that occurs. Okay, we can go to the next one. A little bit about peat. Besides its utility in making Scotch, it's mostly organic material. It is, it's developed usually in a pond where moss and reeds and logs and leaves and grass clippings, and who knows what else, settle on the bottom of a, of a pond. Maybe some water vegetation grows and decays, it does, or dies. It doesn't actually decay underwater very well, so it accumulates. I wanted to make sure I told you that the peat at your site is 80 to 85% water by volume. So in a way, you're building on top of a, of a pond that's got a little bit of organic filler in between it. Of the 15 to 20% of the solids that aren't water, 50 to 90% of those will burn off if you put them in a, in an oven. And we did that, we had our lab do that for, for, for these peats, and in fact, that's the case. We had 50 to 90% of the material actually burned. For some of the other relatively poor soils, when we do that, we find that they're 40 to, no more than 40, maybe 45% water. If we stick them in an oven, we end up with almost the same amount of material left over as we put in, in terms of the solids, and if you put clay in an oven, you bake, you make pottery. It comes out solid, and it doesn't just disappear like the peat does in an oven. So it's a poor material, and it's poor because it's weak, it's compressible, but here's the kicker. It creeps in the long term. Creep, the best way I can explain creep to you is silly putty. Does everybody have silly putty as a child? Okay, well, you can roll it out into a ball, you can bounce it, you can throw it around the room, and so forth, but if you leave it on your bedstand overnight, you come back in the morning and there's a puddle. It's because the material creeps. All materials creep. Pete just happens to creep more than we would like it to, but glass creeps, concrete creeps. Somehow we can deal with the creep in the glass. These windows have creeped a little bit since they were installed. The concrete in most buildings creeps a little bit over the lifetime of the structure. A measurable amount, but not a problematic amount. Creep in peat will be measurable and problematic in the long term for anything built on top of it. Next slide. We took a number of cross-sections through the site, and again, this is the north side of the field, this is the south side of the field. Fowler School is over here on the bottom of the page. The track is roughly 400 and some odd feet long here, and I think it's almost 200 feet wide. This is the, you see these contours are fairly close together, the ground over here's a little bit higher than the ground over here, but the peat is distributed basically within this line here. So it's under a good portion of the field, but it's not under the entire field. We took some colors, and I apologize, you can't see them all that well, but the, the zone here that's between these two contours is where we've got about 0 to 5 feet of peat. And then there's a little darker pink area here where we've got from 5 feet to 10 feet of peat. This dark area that's colored in is where we have 10 to 15 feet of peat, and this area where we've got the bright red is where we've got more than 15 feet of peat, in fact, as much as 17 to 18 feet of peat. We've got a particular problem right here, okay? This is the old foundation for that big building, and we believe that to have built that big building, they had to put piles in the ground and build a thick concrete slab to hold that building up. This means that the best, most stable part of the site is right here, all right? It's also right next to the least stable and most problematic part of the site, and it's surrounded by a problematic part of the site. And the problem comes in, if I go to the next one, Chris. This shows a cross-section kind of expanded, and again, I apologize for the colors, but I can point out the important things to you. There's a yellow layer up at the top here that is the old fill and the material that was placed after the factory was demolished. There's a four-foot-thick concrete slab that was defined and explored quite nicely last year, 19, or 2017, to define the extents of it. It must be supported on piles. We suspect they're timber piles, which would be tree trunks pounded into the ground down to the hard natural soil, which is encountered basically through here. And again, this is a condition along the track, so this corresponds to where that stable portion of the site is, on top of the piles and concrete, and this is where the peat gradually diminishes out to zero over here, and the peat gradually diminishes from about 18 feet out to, well, it keeps going here, but we've been helped a little bit because this ground is already high. It's about eight, seven feet higher than the rest of the site, and that's kind of pre-compressed the peat a little bit. So the peat is improved. Some of the compression that we're worried about, some of the creep that we're worried about's already occurred, so you'd be able to build on top of that with less significant consequences than the peat at the rest of the site. So, next one. I'm just showing, sorry, this is my artist's rendering of the old factory, okay? And the next one. This is the problem, and this is what we all wrestled with on this site, and that is that the peat is quite compressible, so where we have no peat, after we build the field at a certain level, where there is little peat or no peat, we don't expect much significant settlement. The field is not very heavy, so to speak, so we expect that to remain about where we put it. But as you move over down the track, we expect that the amount of settlement will be proportional to the thickness of the peat. So the peat's 0 feet over here, and it's 17 feet over here, we expect the settlement profile greatly exaggerated, of course, but nevertheless, this nature to come down and then be essentially no settlement on top of that old slab. So we have a unfortunate situation where there is a very significant amount of settlement, but the settlement doesn't occur over any kind of a wide zone that there's a transition. It occurs right at a knife edge, so it's basically the same as a curb in the city that you'd have to step over, and therein lies the problem. The next one. The tolerances for a high school track in New York State, track and field, would be less than one inch of differential over a distance of 80 feet for the track. That's a very tight tolerance, and half an inch and 20 feet over the playing surface of the field. I can tell you, I live in the city, I have an old house, and I see, well, I've lived there for 30 years. Last Christmas, my daughter, you've got to love the kids, right? My daughter says, Dad, you know, that corner of the dining room's about an inch lower than the rest of the house. I said, I mean, I don't think you're right, it just looks that way. So anyway, I brought my laser level home, and sure enough, there, there was an inch. So an inch is not problematic to us under lots of circumstances. In fact, I think you might not see an inch in, in the Fowler Field if you, if it occurred relatively gradually. The requirement of being one inch and 80 feet, I think, can be contrasted to the requirement for a handicap ramp, which I believe is one on 20, or one inch and 20 inches, right? So it's one inch over just a, you know, a couple of feet. But, you know, the tolerance is tight. It's certainly tighter than the tolerance in my dining room and what most of us can tolerate in our everyday lives. But that, that differential occurs very abruptly. It would occur over 0 feet. So it's not one inch over 20 feet, it's not one inch over 80 feet, not even one inch over 2 feet, it's one inch over 0 feet is what we're faced with. In addition, we know that there's uncharted old foundations in, in the field that could push, I mean, even though they don't push up, they'll have the appearance of pushing up because as the field goes down and these old foundations don't go down, there'll be little lumps in the field. So, also the variable thickness of peat that we talked about, and there is some. So, the, also the variable thickness of peat that we talked about, and there is some potential for settlement and shifting of the old fill. The old fill was not put in as an engineered material. It's been there a long time. The test borings indicate it's fairly dense. We think that that can be improved by normal methods that aren't gonna, it, it's important that it's done, but it's not a, a big cost compared to these other things. Okay, next one, Chris. The standard method for dealing with compressible materials is to dig them out and replace them, like the DOT did for six ninety. In this case, I don't think it's practical in any sense. The material is controlled material that requires certain protocol and expense for disposal. It's also fairly deep. We'd have to dig it out to a depth of about twenty-five feet. So that's, that's a deep hole, it's a lot of material to come out. But what had been done, what, what has been done in the past, this is an example from East Syracuse that we did a number of years ago. We put, we built a building pad and then put a layer of soil on top of the building pad, four or five feet thick, and let it sit for a few months. And this is a chart of the settlement that occurred under the weight of that surcharge fill, okay? More, more material than we needed, and this shows how the settlement occurred. This, this shows that in about two months, two to three months, we had a few inches of settlement. After that settlement occurred, we were sure that it wouldn't occur after construction, so we felt safe to go in and build the building and the floor and keep it within a, a good tolerance for, for the future. So we did that, and in fact, the building, as far as I know, has behaved fine. And look at the next one. We looked at that as a way to, as an option to digging out the material. But to do that, to answer these questions, how much surcharge fill do we need? Where do you put it? How long do you have to leave it on? And can the design tolerances be met if we do it? It requires a significant effort to obtain samples of the soil, test them, interpret those test results, and extrapolate it out to our problem, and then come up with a scheme that actually would work. And the control you have over a surcharge fill is how high you make it. The higher you make it, the more expensive it is. How long you leave it on, the longer you leave it on, the less desirable it is under most projects because time is money. And, but the, the most important question to me was, can you actually meet the design tolerance? Are we going to be able to come up with a scheme that will prevent these steps and bumps from occurring in the field after you build it? So in order to do that, we went out, we took some samples of the soil and trimmed them down. Now, we took one-inch-thick samples, about three inches in diameter, and the idea behind this is to stick it, stick those in a special frame, like shown on the left. This is the size of the sample on the right. Those, those aren't the actual samples or the actual test frame, it's just an example I, I put, put together for you. But that frame is intended to squeeze the soil a certain amount, which stimulates how much the soil would squeeze under one foot of fill, or three feet of fill, or five feet of fill, or ten feet of fill. And we get a mathematical relationship as to how much the soil squeezes under that much fill. Go to the next one, Chris, I think. And this is just schematically what it looks like. We can put an incremental load on top. The sample here, that little brown thing, could very well be your peat. It's a little darker color. I think everybody's seen peat. You can buy it at Home Depot in a plastic bag to put in your garage. It's the same thing. This Fowler peat probably has a little silt and clay mixed in with it, but it's not entirely peat moss, but it's, it's very close to, to peat moss. We measure how much the cap moves down under so many pounds of load, and we're able to develop a mathematical model for what happens. We'll put, and actually, some of our tests, the reason why some of these took so long was after we ran this test, which takes a couple of weeks, we simulated taking off the surcharge load. So we took off several hundred pounds per square foot on these samples to see what happened. And interestingly enough, this is what's also been noted by others with peat, is that the sample expands a little bit. It doesn't seem to do very much for a few minutes or days in the laboratory, but then it resumes the creep. So it creeps at a slower rate after a time delay. So we ran the test to evaluate what that time delay would be and how much it would creep after we took the surcharge off. Let me go to the next one. And based on those numbers, we could develop this mathematical representation, and I'm sorry, I kind of have to explain that. This is the only one that you have to really pay attention for.
If you can't tell.
Well, just, just like school, everybody sits in the back, I know, so the, this is a depiction of the amount of settlement that we would predict based on those laboratory tests. This is five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five inches. It's a lot of settlement. The settlement where we have, well, see, it's plotted against time, but we're looking at what happens over a few-month construction period as well as what happens in the next thirty to fifty years. Okay? The, the field's got to be designed to be durable and to last a lengthy period of time without significant repairs. So we're able to establish this family of curves. And this is what happens if we have five feet of peat and a six-foot surcharge load. So the ground settles, we take the surcharge off after a few months, the ground will heave up a little bit, there'll be a little bit of a grace period before it starts to creep again, but then it'll creep at a reduced rate. And we can actually estimate the numbers of how much it would creep. For this particular case, where we have five feet of peat and put on a six-foot surcharge and leave it for a few months, I come up with about half an inch of settlement in the long term. But we've got a host of conditions out there. We've got, remember, you've got ten feet, fifteen feet, almost twenty feet of peat. We could put on six feet, three feet, ten feet of surcharge load, and we could leave it on for three months, four months, five months, eight months, two years. All those are possibilities, and each one of those generates a slightly different behavior. But if we look at a six-month preload where we have seventeen feet of peat, or fifteen feet of peat, which isn't actually the worst case, we don't quite complete all the consolidation upfront. We have a very slow or very short, what I call the honeymoon period, where the ground stops creeping, but then soon thereafter, it resumes creeping. But I come up with what I'd call almost two inches. It's one point six seven was my number, but I'd have to count that as almost two inches of settlement in the next ten, ten years after construction. It's like eleven years after the, the load goes on, or load comes off. So the time it takes to do the construction is also important if we put the load on, take it off, and spend six months or eight months doing the rest of the project, and then coming in at the last minute and paving the track and installing the turf. That's one thing, but if that is only a three-month period, then we have to deal with more, more, more settlement at the end. Now, that half-inch settlement is something I think we can work with. That is what happens, that, that could create a knife edge, though. Now, that half-inch of step is more than we can really tolerate, so there'd have to be some type of a transition, engineered transition, to allow that half-inch of settlement to be spread out over twenty feet. That's one of the design issues that we're faced with. Let me just explain this time again. This is a log scale, so this is point one years and one year, and every tick here is a factor of ten. So that's one year, ten years, and a hundred years. And I've sketched in some numbers in between as guideposts. I think this is, is this twenty?
Yes.
Thirty and fifty. We have to use the log plot just to capture this in some way that I can understand. But it's on a log scale. It's, it, it shows the creep going at basically a constant rate. That's why we use the log scale. But if we looked at it in a normal frame of reference, it means it's creeping slower and slower and slower. So eventually, it gets to a point where it's just not creeping at all for practical purposes. And I think if you can get through the first thirty years or so, for practical purposes, it's not going to creep anymore for you. The next one.
Just want to be conscious of our time here.
Okay. I'm almost done.
It's fascinating, but.
There's so much more I want to tell you.
We can tell.
To meet the tolerances, though, for basically a fifteen-year life, we can't do that with a temporary surcharge alone. We're going to have to do two things. We're going to have to build a structural support. This is basically the same support that the old foundation for the old building is on. And because that's more expensive than surcharge, surcharging would be our first choice. The, the structural frame is more expensive than surcharging, so we want to do the surcharging where we can, but where we, where it won't work, we can't do it. So if we move on to the next one, we've sketched out the concept for a most efficient design. We'll use a structural support, basically an old foundation on, or a new foundation on new piles for areas where the deepest peat is right next to the old mat foundation. And we'll use a preloading with a temporary surcharge fill for the thinner areas of peat. And we don't have to do anything for the other areas. Get the next one? And this is what it looks like, artist rendering, okay? This is the old foundation, this is the school over here. This area here would be, will require a structural support. This area over here requires the temporary surcharge fill, preloading with a temporary surcharge fill for a certain period of time, and then there'll have to be a little bit of an engineered transition between these two areas. That would be, at, at least for today, that's like a gangplank, okay? Like you'd have for your boat on a lake. It can go up and down a little bit and ease the, the rough transition that would happen. The next one, Chris. So I doctored up the cross-section to show you this. This is the peat deposit that eventually peters out to the north toward Marcellus Street. The temporary surcharge fill would just be a big pile of dirt that has to sit there for a certain period of time. The new foundation would consist of something with piles driven to the stable soil below and a structural slab on top of that, and then there'd be a transition element right here between the two things, and that's shown as a rocker slab or a gangplank. So the, our, right now, we're refining the type and extent of structural support and determining the preloading and earthwork procedures. There's a lot of details for cost estimating in terms of the sequence, the timing, the amount, and they all kind of have to dovetail together, but as you can imagine, there's a lot of complications in there. Everything kind of has to fit together at the end. And I guess the next one, Chris, is, I think it's your slide. Yeah. So I'm going to turn it back over to Chris here.
Great.
Before, actually, before you leave, just a couple of quick questions. I think you mentioned before, what was the factory that was in there?
Well, I, I can tell you, it's, it was the Franklin Automobile Factory, and Carrier later took it over. I, I just haven't remembered picking my dad up there. He worked for Carrier when I was a little kid. My mom would put me in the car, we'd go pick dad up after work, so.
So, it's, so were there a lot of environmental issues because of the fill in there? And, you know, peat being, peat's a decent filter, did the peat help remediate? No? None of the environmental issue? Okay. So you, so you're going to have to, you know, dig up the peat because obviously it's not solid, but you also have to dig up to remediate a lot of the contaminants in it.
So one of the things that Jim and my team have been looking at along with CNS is how we can, we've done a lot of testing on that soils. The soils are considered regulated. They are not considered a contaminated soil. Per DEC, the soils can stay on-site. So we've been trying to come up with a way to leave the soils on-site while maintaining all the tolerances that are required on-site.
Yeah, that'll save some money, then. You won't have to remediate.
Correct. Yep, we're trying to save as much as we possibly can.
And I can't use that peat to start my own scotch company here, right?
I don't know if I'd want to use that particular peat. Yeah, not that petite.
So another question for whoever wants to answer it. One thing that's important to remember is, and it's not a, the placing is a little bit differently, but there was a field here.
Right.
So either anecdotally, or does, does anyone have any information on, from the time that a field, the field was built there? Have we had structural issues in this area over the?
So currently, there is no field on the site right now. The old field, and I don't, if somebody can.
It's a little further to the, to the south.
It was further to the south. It was oriented differently. The field also was not a artificial field. It was a natural field, so any settlement that would have occurred over time, the maintenance facilities would have been able to make those adjustments and, and shim them up essentially. I don't have any issues there.
That, okay. Just looking for some institutional history here, Tom.
Principal can tell you about the cafeteria floor that had to get, had to put, I think they put flowable fill under it when you were there as the principal, Mr. Alisah, and we did have other issues. We found the roof drains weren't connected when we did the phase one project there. So that undermined, that had water flowing under the building, which undermined, we had to fill that with fill. That's really not related to the peat, but there have been issues there over the year. And actually, in some of the old documents, the research bureau upstairs found some old documents that we've been going through, they had issues when they put the factory in there originally with the foundations there. So yeah, it's been a long history there.
So I have a question because of your question. So if there, was there issues with the field, though? Because if we, why don't we just, this doesn't make sense, I'm sure, but why don't we just move the field to back where it was if there wasn't a lot of issues?
We can't, because the field where it was, part of that's a flood zone. They ran the easement through it, and that field was failing. Originally, the county was going to dig under it, and they ended up ripping it up. And then we used part of that for the upper parking lot, and we have a hill there. This is, we are sort of landlocked by the easement and utilities, so we did look at various configurations here to construct the field.
Okay, so talk about the next steps here.
Sure. I just, sorry. Yeah, I, I did want to just mention, as we were talking, fifteen years is what we were looking at for those tolerances. The reason we were looking at that fifteen-year mark is, that is roughly the expected life of an artificial turf and when a track would need to be resurfaced. So it, it gets you through the, the expected life of a, a track and field.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's an important point that we're not eliminating it. As Jim has said, it's going to continue to do that for up to thirty years, that you could see some movement over there. We're just trying to find that middle ground that says it gets you the performance that you need and keeps you in tolerance until such time that you would expect to have to do maintenance on it.
Right.
But I just think it's an important piece that it's not a, not a lifetime, not a lifetime deal that, you know, we were going to experience some issues. So steps forward, as I mentioned at the beginning, we're kind of parallel after, we need confirmation from SED that they'll allow us to exceed that cost allowance that we have for the incidental cost.
Just have Jim give them the presentation. I think they'll be convinced.
We actually took a drawing that Jim had helped us with to kind of just give that, to illustrate that. Unfortunately, Roseanne Groff had, had experience with projects where they had done some surcharge, so she was familiar with some of the nuances to that, which was good. So we're working to, we're here today, obviously, to present to you the challenges and so you understand what it is that we're dealing with and why it's taken as long as it has. The next piece to that is, if we've got the parameters defined for how we move forward, we release, you know, Labella and Jim to advance that design. They're going to need a couple of months to get that to a position where it will be bidable, and obviously, then we go through a procurement period, and that's identified there as February, May, that's our target. And then the construction, I've got, there's a very, very long duration identified there, and we're looking to better that. I just, standing here today, until we actually have the zeros and ones on a piece of paper and Nate can get into it with an estimate, and we can get into it with a phasing, and we can understand how we're going to build this, we can fine-tune that as we move forward. As we know, the summers are critical. So you've got nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one for that, and if for some reason, we can't get there in nineteen, or there's an issue, or we preload part of this and it doesn't do what we wanted it to do, there's a lot of potential things that could take us off course. So that's, that's what attributes to that. And I mean, and we want it far sooner than that, and we're going to work to that end, but.
I have a couple more questions. Anybody else have questions? So where did Jim go? Is he behind you? Okay. So the multimillion-dollar question. Can it be done?
Yep. Yep, it can be done.
Okay.
But there's some costs.
Understood. And so for, for any, any of... And so, for any of the design professionals up here, and seriously, thank you so much for this work. It's clear that we have the right team working on the project, so thank you for this. It's... You know, I think it does help everyone to better understand that the challenges associated with this site. Which... So, when people look at this presentation, and even before that, people have asked the question, well, is it worth it? At what point do you just say, you know what, it's too much... This is too much of a challenge. It's too expensive. Let's find another place to do it. Now, I've been of the mind, and I think Jaime as well, that it's on-site. It is... Yes, it's challenging, but we live in a city that's old and has had past development, and it's just the... It's the cost of doing business in an older industrial city. But, when you... When we compare this option to, you know, other proximate sites where you might... It might be, you know, residential area, it might be the developmental center up the street. I suspect some of these challenges will still be there because the soil's the soil. But, how do you... How can... How do we compare this option to other options at this point? What... Can you give some sense of that? I mean, I think we're pretty far down this road, but just a little bit better of a sense of what we might be... Other challenges we'd be dealing with elsewhere in close proximity.
Without... No, and you guys jump in here, but without knowing the exact site, I mean, I would... This is... I would tell you, this is very atypical.
Right.
The extent of what we're doing here is very, very atypical.
Right.
From a cost perspective, significantly more than what you would expect to construct this field in, you know, in a piece of vacant land or a piece of land that the district may own. It's significantly different than that.
Okay.
Does that frame it?
Yeah, I don't... I didn't... My question wasn't really clear because I don't think it's clear in my mind. But, again, it's just trying to compare this option to... I don't know that we have any other really good options, but, again, I've been of the mind that we just need to work through this because this is where... This is the hand that we've been dealt. But, I want to make sure we're not being irresponsible in our strong desire to get this project done.
Yeah, we would need a really large piece of land for this complex. One of the other issues we have is, we use this not just for sports, but for phys ed classes. And if we had it at another location, it's not practical, as Superintendent Alasa reminded me. I think it's... How many minute periods do we have in gym class? So, we have to get the kids out to the gym site, on and on. If we had even go up someplace like the developmental center, you're losing half of the period while the kids are walking up there and back. So, that was a significant consideration. And we have looked... You do need a real sizable piece of land to build a complex like this.
Mayor, actually, I do have a question. Actually, Pat Bodie sparked it. She asked about moving the field back to the original place, which you said couldn't be done. That whole Fowler complex where some of the parking lots are, it couldn't be... You couldn't look at it at other places on the existing complex? You know, would you still have some of the remediation issues? So, again, I know, you know, there's a parking lot north of the facility.
Yeah, we looked at the upper fields there, and we had, you know, a concerned citizen tell us, you can put it up where the upper field is behind houses. It's not wide enough. You need... And then we're landlocked. Where that field was originally, that is a flood zone, so we cannot really build in that area.
So, but the answer is, you looked at... You looked at the whole complex.
Oh, we've looked at...
Okay.
Oh, we've looked at a lot of different options, yes.
This site really does shoehorn us into this area. The original field was in this location, as Tom mentioned. The new parking lot, the new addition kind of required us to not do that. The Harbor Brook running through here, along with all its easements. And then we did look at the north lot up here of the site, and there's several houses up here, and this site gets very tight as well.
And the south... And the south portion, it couldn't be done?
It's not wide enough with all the easements that are running through there and the floodplain.
Okay.
And it just goes on and on.
This is the most challenging project I've done as an engineer in thirty years. I've had more issues on this project.
Yeah.
It's a very challenging project.
Well, I think as long as... As long as we're confident, and I think I am after hearing that, that we have thoroughly explored alternatives. I think ultimately, I come back to where I think Jaime's been for a long time, which is, you know, the kids shouldn't have to pay for the unique challenges that we have here. It's the hand we've been dealt. They deserve a quality facility that, like any other school. And when I think about what it will look like when it's done and how it will enhance the school, the surrounding neighborhood, I think it's going to... We've spent a lot of money on probably projects that have... Would have much less impact than this one. This is... It's important, and I think that we just have to continue to work through it. Jaime, anything? Anything, Dad?
And it's not only the parking lot that was built there. It's also the library that took part of that, you know, land that was there. Because we used to have the parking lot next to the street, and then the field after, so...
I, you know, the next thing, and I'm sure you don't have it now, is what that number would look like. You know, we're saying it's considerably more. And just my approach is, it's an investment. You know, we keep talking about the expense, but it's an investment. It's not an expense. You know, this is an investment. It's an investment. We're spending more than we want to, but it's going to pay dividends in a whole bunch of ways, not just academically.
That's right. Yeah, I think to that point with, you know, what I'm hearing is the thought process to move forward with the design. Jim has done a lot of work on the initial study to ensure that we have that fifteen-year period. It will have to be addressed after that as well, but we have that fifteen-year period of the life of the field and the track. With that, the design will be able to move forward, and then from there, CNS will be able to take a look at the costs and the implications from that standpoint for the investment. Absolutely.
I just want to say that is one side of town that has the highest poverty in town, and we don't have facilities for the kids in that side of town.
Right.
And they deserve the same thing that we provide to the kids at Corcoran, at Henninger, and all, you know, so...
Yeah, I think Kelvin put it the right way. It's an investment. Okay. Other questions? Anything else from the team? Any further questions? Again, really great work, and appreciate the explanation, and I'm going to encourage people to get on our YouTube page and watch the presentation because I really do think it helps to contextualize the issue, and it certainly helped me to appreciate the challenges associated with this one. But, I think we all agree, it's well worth the investment. So, continue to push on. I know Jaime's going to continue to push you on the schedule.
I'm more hopeful today than, you know, than eight o'clock this morning.
Good. So, you know, understanding there's a lot of challenges, you know, we want to see this happen as quickly as possible and just continue to keep us updated along the way. And, you know, as I've said before, anytime you need us to weigh in and help at the state level, let us know. But, it sounds like it was a good last meeting, so...
Progress, yeah.
Good. Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.